Can you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sarah, could you do a roll call vote to establish a quorum, please?
Yes, ma'am. Brad Crandall.
Here.
Don Forten.
Here.
Sarah Jones here.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Dana Wells Jenny.
Here.
Jeff Wolfersberger.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Here.
Agenda? Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or remove from tonight's? Okay. All right. 2.01, comments from the public. Sarah?
We've got a pile of them.
Oh, excuse me. Before we go into comments of the public, before you address the board, we ask that you provide us with your name, address, affiliation to the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments should not be directed at any individual on the board, rather to the board as a whole. This is a meeting of the Board of Education and is held in public. Board members will not be responsible, excuse me, will be responding to public comments, but you may request a formal response for a later time. Sorry.
Okay. At the top of the list, I have Kevin Ralston.
My name is Kevin Ralston. I live at 128 Viking Court. And I'm on behalf of the students and my son, and these masks. I'm sorry. You guys did not, as a committee, did not take in consideration two days to make a survey to find out if we should mask our kids or not. That is ridiculous. We could have extended one more week, and you could have done the whole community at large. There are students in this school that have learning disabilities, medical learning disabilities, like hearing loss, hard of hearing. It's hard for students to look, and they read lips. It's hard for teachers to read a kid that can be struggling with something that's going on at home, with parents, with students. You didn't take that in consideration. There's people in this room that wanted the mask. They pushed hard. And I can tell you, it looked like, and it's been talked about through the community, it looked like the board was afraid because it went on the news. It isn't about the news. It isn't about other communities. Just because it got publicized with the news, should have never pushed it to a two-day, and then get a phone call saying that 5:00 PM on the second day was the cutoff time. There was many parents that worked two jobs, worked hours, ridiculous hours. My myself, I go in at 4:00 AM. There's nights I don't get home until 8:00. I made it in by five minutes on that survey. I am very disappointed in this board. This community put you guys in charge of this board because we didn't like what the old board did to our students. You guys are starting to do it. Don't do that. I have a lot of respect for every one of you guys up here because it's a hard job to do. I get it. But at the same time, please take in consideration our students. It's hard enough for them to go through high school. We all went through it. We know what it's like to be picked on. We know what it's like to go through all that. I'm passionate about this because my son does have hearing issues. He didn't want to have to tell a teacher he couldn't hear. He doesn't want to have to tell his friends he has trouble hearing. Because what happens to those kids? It gets around the school. He can't hear. So then they pick on him. Then they make little off the side. The clicks start hitting. That's something that you guys didn't take in consideration. One more week of distance learning would not have hurt us one bit. And if it was for count day, was the reason to push it that fast? That's not a reason either. Those tax dollars? You put money before the student's education and what the student body wanted. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have Nicole Badger.
Hi. I'm Nicole Badger. I live at 23680M78. I'm a Penfield parent. I had it all written out what I was going to say, but honestly, just a half an hour before I came here today, I got off the phone with an attorney who has been giving me legal advice on the survey issue. As I found out, my children took this survey about a month ago. I was irate, to say the least, when I found out the questions that were on the survey regarding sexual orientation and gender specificity. So I just got off the phone half an hour ago, so I'm just getting this. He tried to reach out because he knew the board meeting was today. So, this is called the PPRA, the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment. You violated this amendment and actually broke the law. He wanted to be sure that I was clear about this, that you are well aware that. We reached out to the principal of the middle school, and she tried to pass the blame on the CIST, the Calhoun Intermediate School Department, and the Michigan Department of Education. He said that is not a compound. This is fully to do with your participation in the survey, and what you did was absolutely illegal. You should not have given this survey that had anything to do with sexual behavior or attitudes without parents' full permission and knowledge. It is illegal. You violated our rights as parents and our children's rights. And I want an apology from the board, from the district, acknowledging that they did this to all parents, and then I will no longer, like, I will not seek further action on this. Suing the school is never something that I wanted to do, but I knew something was wrong here, and I am just a stay-at-home mom, so I had to reach out for legal advice, but you broke the law. Okay? I have it all right here. If anybody wants it, email to me. The school must get parental consent under the PPRA. You can look it up yourself. If there, if anything is being conducted in the survey that is, has anything to do with these eight things, which is political affiliation, mental or psychological problems of the student or their family, sex behaviors or attitude, and it goes on. But that specifically violated the sex behaviors or attitude, and you broke the law. Okay? So now we're breaking laws here. So I just wanted to let you know that in case you didn't know, because I feel like everyone I reach out to is passing the buck here. They don't even know the laws and what is illegal or not. It was illegal. Okay? I will read this as quickly as I can now. I'm here today to discuss several concerns I have as a Penfield parent. First, the mask mandate. One of my children suffers with asthma. We're going to see a doctor tomorrow in the morning for a note for my child, as they cannot breathe in masks. My child, without asthma, came home from school on Tuesday, and he told me in his last hour, he came to his teacher and told her he felt very dizzy. She said, okay.
Mrs. Badger, you're at your time, so if you could just wrap it up, please?
Oh, boy. Okay. Well, you guys already know my, so the mask issue is huge for me, but thank you so much for the distance learning. That is huge. Okay? That's all I ask for. Also, I know the board has been addressed several times about the LGBTQ verbiage. I reached out to legal advice on this matter as well, and if there's any policies that are going to be made by the school, the parents have to know. And just know that if there's coercion in any way to manipulate our children's verbiage and their accurate pronouns, it's also a violation of their civil rights. I have way more to say, but I'll just wrap that up. All right. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Next, I have Courtney Hauser.
My name is Courtney Hauser. I'm here, my address is 10164 Gorstline. I'm here as a Penfield parent and as a bus driver. I take great issue with the masks and the safety of our children. I want to know when we are going to take back the reins of our children and stop pointing fingers. We are pointing fingers at the CDC, at the Health Department, at each other. Why? For what? What is this teaching our children? Discrimination, fear. When are we going to take back and educate our children again? This is not what we are here for. We are here to educate our children and teach our children. Our children have
Can you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sarah, could you do a roll call vote to establish a quorum, please?
Yes, ma'am. Brad Crandall.
Here.
Don Forten.
Here.
Sarah Jones here. Brian Smith.
Here.
Dana Wells Jenny.
Here.
Jeff Wolfersberger.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Agenda? Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or remove from tonight's? All right, 2.01, comments from the public. Sarah?
We've got a pile of them.
Oh, excuse me, before we go into comments of the public, before you address the board, we ask that you provide us with your name, address, affiliation to the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments should not be directed at any individual on the board, rather to the board as a whole. This is a meeting of the Board of Education and is held in public. Board members will not be responsible, excuse me, will be responding to public comments, but you may request a formal response for a later time. Sorry.
Okay, at the top of the list, I have Kevin Ralston.
My name is Kevin Ralston. I live at 128 Viking Court. And I'm on behalf of the students and my son, of these masks. I'm sorry, you guys did not, as a committee, did not take in consideration, two days to make a survey to find out if we should mask our kids or not. That is ridiculous. We could have extended one more week and you could have done the whole community at large. There are students in this school that have learning disabilities, medical learning disabilities, like hearing loss, hard of hearing. It's hard for students to look and they read lips. It's hard for teachers to read a kid that can be struggling with something that's going on at home, with parents, with students. You didn't take that in consideration. There's people in this room that wanted the mask. They pushed hard. And I can tell you, it looked like, and it's been talked about through the community, it looked like the board was afraid because it went on the news. It isn't about the news. It isn't about other communities. Just because it got publicized with the news, should have never pushed it to a two-day and then get a phone call saying that 5:00 PM on the second day was the cutoff time. There was many parents that worked two jobs, worked hours, ridiculous hours. My myself, I go in at 4:00 AM. There's nights I don't get home until 8:00. I made it in by five minutes on that survey. I am very disappointed in this board. This community put you guys in charge of this board because we didn't like what the old board did to our students. You guys are starting to do it. Don't do that. I have a lot of respect for every one of you guys up here because it's a hard job to do. I get it, but at the same time, please, take in consideration our students. It's hard enough for them to go through high school. We all went through it. We know what it's like to be picked on. We know what it's like to go through all that. I'm passionate about this because my son does have hearing issues. He didn't want to have to tell a teacher he couldn't hear. He doesn't want to have to tell his friends he has trouble hearing. Because what happens to those kids? It gets around the school, he can't hear. So then they pick at him, then they make little off the side. The clicks start hitting. That's something that you guys didn't take in consideration. One more week of distance learning would not have hurt us one bit. And if it was for Count Day, was the reason to push it that fast? That's not a reason either. Those tax dollars, you put money before the student's education and what the student body wanted. That's all I have to say.
I have Nicole Badger.
Hi, I'm Nicole Badger. I live at 23680 M78. I'm a Penfield parent. I had it all written out what I was going to say, but honestly, just a half an hour before I came here today, I got off the phone with an attorney who has been giving me legal advice on the survey issue. As I found out, my children took this survey about a month ago. I was irate, to say the least, when I found out the questions that were on the survey regarding sexual orientation and gender specificity. So I just got off the phone half an hour ago, so I'm just getting this. He tried to reach out because he knew the board meeting was today. So, this is called the PPRA, the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment. You violated this amendment and actually broke the law. He wanted to be sure that I was clear about this, that you are well aware that. We reached out to the principal of the middle school and she tried to pass the blame on the CIST, the Calhoun Intermediate School Department, and the Michigan Department of Education. He said that is not a compound. This is fully to do with your participation in the survey and what you did was absolutely illegal. You should not have given this survey that had anything to do with sexual behavior or attitudes without parents' full permission and knowledge. It is illegal. You violated our rights as parents and our children's rights. And I want an apology from the board, from the district, acknowledging that they did this to all parents and then I will no longer, like, I will not seek further action on this. Suing the school is never something that I wanted to do, but I knew something was wrong here and I am just a stay-at-home mom, so I had to reach out for legal advice, but you broke the law. Okay? I have it all right here. If anybody wants to email to me, the school must get parental consent under the PPRA. You can look it up yourself. If there, if anything is being conducted in the survey that is, has anything to do with these eight things, which is political affiliation, mental or psychological problems of the student or their family, sex behaviors or attitude, and it goes on. But that specifically violated the sex behaviors or attitude and you broke the law. Okay, so now we're breaking laws here. So I just wanted to let you know that in case you didn't know, because I feel like everyone I reach out to is passing the buck here. They don't even know the laws and what is illegal or not. It was illegal. Okay? I will read this as quickly as I can now. I'm here today to discuss several concerns I have as a Penfield parent. First, the mask mandate. One of my children suffers with asthma. We're going to see a doctor tomorrow in the morning. For a note for my child, is they cannot breathe in masks. My child, without asthma, came home from school on Tuesday and he told me in his last hour, he came to his teacher and told her he felt very dizzy. She said, okay.
Mrs. Badger, you're at your time, so if you could just wrap it up, please?
Oh, boy. Okay, well, you guys already know my, so the mask issue is huge for me, but thank you so much for the distance learning. That is huge. Okay, that's all I ask for. Also, I know the board has been addressed several times about the LGBTQ verbiage. I reached out to legal advice on this matter as well. And if there's any policies that are going to be made by the school, the parents have to know. And just know that if there's coercion in any way to manipulate our children's verbiage and their accurate pronouns, it's also a violation of their civil rights. I have way more to say, but I'll just wrap that up. All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Next, I have Courtney Hauser.
My name is Courtney Hauser. I'm here, my address is 10164 Gorstline. I'm here as a Penfield parent and as a bus driver. I undertake great issue with the masks and the safety of our children. I want to know when we are going to take back the reins of our children and stop pointing fingers. We are pointing fingers at the CDC, at the Health Department, at each other. Why? For what? What is this teaching our children? Discrimination, fear. When are we going to take back and educate our children again? This is not what we are here for. We are here to educate our children and teach our children. Our children have fallen behind in leaps and bounds. I have watched my child's mental health suffer greatly the last two years and it is sickening because of the masks and the fear mongering and the discrimination, the vaccinated, the unvaccinated, the masking, the unmasking. It's sickening. Absolutely sickening. None of us are masked. Okay, there may be a few. Are we six feet apart? No. Why are we doing this to our children? Why? Safety of our children. Do you know how many people run our red lights? It is sickening. What's it going to take? What do we need to do to get red light cameras on those buses? What is it? That survey? Another thing, I just found out about that. I don't think that's information you guys really need. Why do you guys need to know what my child identifies as? You guys are here to educate. Teach them to make decisions. Smart decisions. You don't need to know why they're making those decisions or what they identify as sexually or why they want to wear a mask or don't want to wear a mask. You don't need to know their political affiliations. Teach them to make smart decisions. Educate them. That's what you're here for. Not to fear monger, not to force medical decisions. Safety, education. Work with that. Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Stacy Neiman.
Just going to break the pattern here and say a word in support of masks. Also, want to welcome our new superintendent. I'm excited for the possibilities that he brings to our district. The past few weeks with no quarantines and no worry about quarantines and no distance learning and no, none of that has been lovely. As a parent, by the way, I live on M78, dead end of the kids, I've done that, but North Penn. I would like the kids to be able to finish the school year without threat of quarantines or distance learning or back and forth and not knowing what is going to come the next day. A lot of kids don't do great with it. So, I'm here for the masks. My kids are here for the masks. If I keep wearing them, it's not an issue.
Thank you.
Next, I have Crystal Newman.
Hello, Crystal Newman, 21473 Clare Lake Avenue. I am a North Penn parent. I too want to say welcome because I'm very excited for new leadership. I figure most of the words you'll get tonight are about masks, yay mask, no mask, whatever. Personally, my child cannot complete a full day of distance learning. He's in kindergarten. He's six, nine, 10, 11, noon, 1:55. He has not completed one single day of distance learning. Not one. And he's sad about it. He's six, he doesn't care about the masks. Anyway, I'm not here to really speak about that. I'm here about something different that kind of enraged me. I've heard through different rumors that the board abuses their position to gain special privileges. I haven't witnessed it until last Tuesday. February 1st, while I was in the pickup line at North Penn Elementary, the vehicle directly in front of me sped around a stopped vehicle. They were stopped because if you don't know, at North Penn, you give the child's name, they write it down, they radio to a person inside so that way they have an order. It goes very smoothly. As they sped around and drove away, they were waving that person down. They didn't stop, they kept going. As we turned the corner, I saw who it was. To my surprise, it was a school board member. An officer, if I can be more exact, though I am still addressing the whole board. I also witnessed this board member have a combative conversation with several staff members, at least five. And to the tune of, you know me, so it's assumed I don't have to stop. I don't have to follow procedure. You know who I am, give me the kids, let's go. I am a Popcorn Friday lifer over at Ninth North Penn. I'm basically the popcorn woman. I'm also a very active PTO member, so I guess I should just be like, oh, you guys know me, give me my kids, let's go. I don't have to do any of this. This act was so disrespectful, not only to the staff, the teachers, the parents. I just couldn't really believe it. I've been steaming for the past week. Our Penfield staff does so much. I don't know if you even truly know that. They do so much. They are the only reason a lot of us still have our students in this school. The staff, not you. Definitely not. The staff. They are holding this district together. And this was a clear disrespectful act to them. They don't need trouble from us, the parents, with this mask issue. They have enough on their plates, literally enough. It is so distressing. North Penn is amazing with pickup and drop-off. I haven't seen a single thing about that. Here, yes, if we're able.
Ms. Newman, you're at three minutes, if you could wrap it up?
Okay, anyway, nothing will probably happen, no consequences for any interactions and you'll probably get away with more as the district suffers publicly and internally. The hope is eventually others speak up. You guys are very intimidating and have bullying behavior, so people don't speak up. My hope is that you either resign, someone leaves the charge to recall you, or yes, others speak up because you are unfit for this position.
Hi, I'm April Adams, 128 New Bern Drive, Battle Creek. I am a school of choice parent. I want to address the school lunches. I have my students come to home pretty much every day. It's that school's, that just suck. Chicken nuggets or gray meat, would you eat that? Probably not. Bosco sticks are the only thing that's decent. Quite frankly, it's less than two bucks. Pepper jack burger had green meat on the inside. One last thing, assigned seats. Why do you have to assign seats to high school students that are almost 18? I think it's ridiculous and I want to know why.
Next, I have Dawn Baman.
I'm Dawn Baman. I live on W Drive in Penfield. I have two Penfield students and a graduate from Penfield. My subject today is the mask mandate and how it's affecting our children. I'm just going to state some facts. I'm going to try not to be emotional, but I kind of stink at this. The mandate wasn't about safety. If it was, there would have been proper training on how to dawn and doff a mask. No one was given that. Training on storage and the sanitation of masks and proper fitting of masks. None of that was done. Failure of those items being presented leaves it only to playing a game to ensure that we don't have to send kids home for a quarantine and conformity. And even the quarantines aren't finished with a mask mandate because unvaccinated children still can be and will be sent home for a quarantine. That's not okay because then medical information is given out on students who are or not vaccinated. That's not information that anyone needs. Another fact, if a build hat and a hoodie is a safety hazard because it's covering the child's face, then why is a mask not a safety hazard when it covers more than 50% of that child's face? I promise you, I could put on a mask and I could throw my hair up in a couple of ponytails and dress in sweats and I could make it to third hour. And nobody would know the difference. The majority of the staff and student body don't want to wear masks and this is proven by the lack of masks being worn when they weren't mandated. So that was not taken into consideration when the mandate was made. Another fact is verbal communication is not sufficient to cater to the needs of all learners. We are non-verbal communicators. 55% of all communication is non-verbal and masking anyone takes that away from them. I personally have a student who is a lip reader. And my child in kindergarten said to me, Mom, I can't see my friends smile. I don't know whether they're sad or happy anymore. That's not okay. And it's all about a cold. It stinks and people die from it. And yeah, it's horrible when you get sick and you feel like garbage, but what are we doing to these children for the future? This cold isn't going away and we're not helping it be a part of our lives. We're letting it control us. Our teachers are being asked to monitor social compliance of masking.
Mrs. Baman, you're at three minutes, so if you could wrap it up, thank you.
Instead of doing their job, which is teaching our children. I have here letters from some of the students in the school. And I've made a few copies so that everybody can have them, but they say things like, teachers stop teaching class to yell at us about our masks. It's hard to breathe and I get a headache. It's hard to focus. I can't hear my teachers. I feel like I'm going to pass out. I'm claustrophobic. I wish my friends could see me smile. This is not okay. We're scaring our children into being not children.
Hi, my name is Jenna. I live on Cardinal Avenue and I am a student at the middle school. I'd like to say that every day I sit in class and I hear the teacher screaming at me or other kids and they're threatening to send us home just because our mask doesn't fit right or we don't feel like wearing it. I come home with a headache from wearing a mask and all day being stressed out from getting yelled at by every single teacher. We even get yelled at outside after school hours because I thought it was only in between school hours, so I'll take my mask off and they yell at me. And if hats or hoods aren't allowed because you can't identify us, then why is a mask okay? Because it's covering our whole face. You cannot tell who we are. And I just think masks should be a choice because why are we allowing vaccinated kids to stay in school when being exposed, many of them still get COVID? Students who aren't vaccinated are getting punished by not being allowed at school. These rules are creating bullying, including both students and teachers. Please give us the choice of our own body.
Hey, everybody. Chad Peterson, I live on Bellevue Road and I've got two children in Penfield schools. Just going to read a little letter I typed up. By now, everyone here knows my thoughts and feelings about putting a face mask on our children. We all know this is just a game. It was even said in the last board meeting, the reason we need to introduce universal masking in the schools is to play the Health Department's games in hopes of reducing quarantines. I can safely say, speaking on behalf of my family and many others that are children are not funds in this chess game. It seems as though for the past few weeks, the primary focus in our schools has been the mask, not education. The Revised School Code Act of 1976, Section 1504, says, "This act shall not be construed to authorize compulsory physical examination or compulsory medical treatment of pupils." The FDNC Act, Section 201H, classifies a mask as a medical device which must be properly fit. In other words, our schools are administering medical treatment to our children in the form of a mask, not only against the will of many parents, but it's also being administered improperly. Masking must be a decision left up to the parents. It is our teachers' primary responsibility to educate. Let's get back to teaching the basics of math, science, English, American history, et cetera, and take the task of being a medical professional off the backs of our teachers and staff. We all understand the Health Department is causing a lot of headaches. All we have ever been told is that Mr. Myers can be arrested or fined for not following their guidelines. For many of us who want the contact tracing in quarantines to go away, this is an all-or-nothing battle for us. In other words, no contact tracing, quarantines, or masks. It all needs to go away. Masks are not at one side, fits all band-aid. If a parent wants to mask their child to avoid quarantine, more power to them. My wife and I are not one of them. I am again urging all of you to join the many parents who are questioning and calling out the medical tyranny of Eric Castle and our Health Department. Will you all stand with us to fight for the rights of our children?
My name is Todd Woodward. Live at 8045 Swift Road. I'm kind of up here just to kind of go over what everybody back here is saying. We're sick and tired of our kids being masked. My son lost four days of school because I could not get him from a doctor's office that will not send a letter because it goes against their policy. They would rather have a kid get debilitating headaches than to send him to school without a mask on. That is ridiculous. So we ended up having to take him to a doctor that actually cares about his patients. My son will be down for days with headaches. When he had to wear the mask the last time, nobody cared. I've said this many times, every time I've got up here. We need to get back to teaching our kids the basics and not worrying about whether the mask is on their face or not. We've had students being chased down the halls. Put your mask on. Put your mask on properly. Get that mask on properly. These kids are coming in this school before school day starts, not wearing the mask, but as soon as they get to first hour, that mask better be on properly. They're socially, socializing with each other up there then. What's different from when they go from that lunchroom or the end of the day to a classroom? It's all because we have to play the political game and it needs to stop. And it needs to start with all you guys up here. Fight back against the Health Department. Everything that we've heard, it's a Ron Robin. This person says this, this person says this, we have to follow this, we have to follow this. As a school board, you guys need to step up and say, hey, enough. Other states are doing the same thing. If you have COVID, stay home, quarantine. If you're a close contact, if you feel sick, stay home. We're not doing that. We are close contacting kids that are asymptomatic. They have no signs, symptoms, anything. On my son's report card, 20 days missed in one class, 18 in another, 14 in another, all because he was quarantined. How can you have that much of a discretion, discrepancy on days missed? Because our system is flawed and it needs to be fixed. I've talked to Mr. Hutchins many times, not trying to call him out or anything because I know we're not supposed to, about him being in class and I still got a phone call every single day saying that he missed class. He literally has to say in their chat, hi, I'm here, so he doesn't get marked absent. There are so many issues going on in this school right now. We need to get away from the masks. Let the mask go. It's past the point of even doing any good. We're still having quarantines.
You're at your time. You can wrap it up. Thank you.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I'd first like to thank the teachers and staff that have continued to teach our children in education and not constantly berate them over their masks. Can't read this. Now, I'd like our board and everyone else who is not aware what our children have endured these last two weeks during universal masking to understand. Not only has my child been kicked out of school on two occasions. Once for speaking during a group assignment and her mask fell below her nose twice, got sent to the office. Second time for not wearing what the teacher indicated was not a purposeful mask. Nowhere in any literature is there any kind of verbiage about the style or type of mask. I've heard horror stories of our kids being screamed at in hallways before school, chased down by teachers about their mask not being worn properly, threatened and intimidated about how they wear their mask, and shown how to properly wear a mask with videos during class time, taking up 15 to 20 minutes of their very limited time. Last I knew, these teachers don't have doctorate degrees or any medical training to be teaching our kids how to properly wear a mask. We really need to get back to educating our children in math and reading. My child was given an N95 mask to wear by the school. Per OSHA rule, those must be properly fitted with a medical clearance to wear. Penfield School District is passing those out to students. You have to sign a legal responsibility form, taking the obligation of safety on the district. Do we have that? We even had parents be screamed at by principals because they weren't able to secure a medical exemption for their child because this issue has been so politicized, not only by our local health department, but now our school district. Sorry. To the point, the parent has been told, no mask, no Penfield education for your child. I guess one of our board members was correct when he said we have to play their game. Effective boards, take full and final accountability for their districts, right? Well, the Greek philosopher Diogenes once said, was said to have walked around in daylight with a lamp, seeking an honest man. If he were alive today, he might instead be seeking accountable school boards, and so are we. What our board members' responsibilities are and what we expect to advocate for our students, make sure our teachers are teaching and not playing politics, approve plans for facilities and technology, setting priorities for school district expenditures, overseeing districts' education programs. Unfortunately, most boards, including our own, have stepped outside their role as board members as you've been compromised by a tendency to micromanage school system operations and divisiveness caused by special interest groups. Penfield is so far away from the district I remember, the one I was so proud to be a part of and graduate from. And it's a farther cry away from the district my 29-year-old Marine vet graduated from in 2011. Following orders and playing the game is what is killing our nation. Now you're teaching our children that's what they need to do. Fall in line, play the game. Following orders led to my daughters and I not being able to say goodbye to my mother in November of 2021 because of the ridiculous mandates that you're now imposing on our children. If you think my daughter is a lawbreaker or a rule breaker, you're wrong. And anyone that believes I am teaching her to break the law or the rules, take a look at my 29-year-old who signed up to be a Marine to fight and protect all of you for the rights you currently enjoy.
Ms. Finch, if you can start to wrap it up.
I'm at the end.
Yep.
Both of my daughters have been taught to be respectful and courteous and follow laws, but they've also been taught to stand up for what they believe in. Not my beliefs, but their own. I'm disappointed in what Penfield Schools is teaching our children. You're teaching them to take the path of least resistance because then they'll never fail, instead of teaching them to stand up and have a voice in their future. Because my rights and the rights of my children don't end where your fear begins.
Thank you.
Natalie Perouker.
What's the first initial of the last name? I'm not even gonna try to spell that.
Hi, my name is Natalie. I'm a seventh grade Kinsler student. I would like to start by thanking you, the teachers, for teaching us to not think critically, but instead just do as we're told, not question authority. Thank you for teaching us to take the path of least resistance so we never fail. Thank you for teaching us that you would rather have us in school with masks than caring about our mental health and how we feel about being masked and not seeing each other's facial expressions. Thank you for letting us know that our opinion does not matter by not including us in the recent masking poll. The fact that we can't breathe does not help us in learning and staying focused. Our student opinion matters and maybe you should try to think about us instead of being scared by getting COVID. People are so scared they wear two, maybe even three masks. Penfield's universal masking policy has affected my friends and myself in the following ways. I experienced one of my friends throwing up all over the seat and floor because she was so nervous to walk into school after pride time and get screamed at. A teacher that we have all spends 15 minutes out of her 45-minute class yelling at not only me, but several other students because we don't know how to wear a mask properly. She even pulls up pictures and videos on how to wear and write. I have gotten kicked out of school two times in one week because of the type of mask I wear. In effect, they're just anywhere, they just, they do not specify what kind of mask we can, can't wear. They have said that my mask does not work as a proper face mask because it does not serve as a proper, or a purposeful mask. I don't understand why we only have five bathroom passes a month. I understand that some people are abusing their privileges of just using the bathroom when we ask the teacher, but why don't you punish those ones and not the ones that aren't? You have to understand that girls have feminine issues and for other people, just when you use the bathroom. And maybe even have anxiety due to the mask not being able to breathe. There are students out there that have asthma, anxiety, and breathing problems on their own, and might have added mask mandates on top of it.
Thank you.
Addison Wood.
I'm Addison Wood. I believe the masks are unpurposeful and that masking not works whatsoever. There are students out there that can't breathe and have conditions that makes it hard to breathe. You guys need to understand that what we're, what we are going through is 12-year-old growing students. Can you please just understand a little bit and consider what we are asking for? The teachers are so strict on us about how we wear them. Our life is hard enough as it is. The teachers reminding us how to wear our masks are extremely uncalled for and disrespectful about it. Not only are masks a problem, the teachers forcing us to wear our masks are as well. I cannot walk around with my mask below my nose without getting reminded to pull it up. I had a severe case of proctitis when I was an infant, making it hard, hard and struggling to breathe in my mask. In conclusion, I believe that masks are not much of a help seeing how we have already had many quarantines throughout the week, even with masks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Green.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Green. I live on Clearwood Road. I'm a Penfield resident, former coach, and I have a little guy that hopefully will be in the system here soon. First off, I do want to welcome my new superintendent. Sorry, this is how you get welcomed into our district. I do actually want to speak briefly about the mask mandate. I do want to actually speak on the side of, you know, for the mask because there are actually a lot of teachers and staff, parents and students out there who do support this mask mandate. The problem is that the bullying culture that we have going on right now in our community makes them feel like they can't come forward and speak at these board meetings. They actually fear backlash from others in the community, in the school district. So I'm here on behalf of those people, those anonymous people that I have spoken with and that are actually, you know, usually they're pretty grateful that somebody is out there saying, hey, there are some people out here that say this is actually a good idea. I actually work in the emergency room in the area and I work 40 to 60 hours per week right now. I do wear a mask, usually a surgical grade or an N95 if I have to go in for any COVID-related patients. We also have to wear N95s in full PPE and gown and shields and gloves when we're doing CPR. I think that's the one time I can say it. It really was difficult to breathe while I was doing chest compressions on a patient in full gear. However, I do acknowledge that there are people out there that find it difficult to wear these masks. I think maybe we can find some kind of common ground with if there's a child like having a panic attack. Maybe there's an area in the room they can go to and remove their mask and have a minute to calm down, you know, maybe something like that. I think we need to just set better examples for our children. And if we say, hey, guys, this is temporary. We're not gonna do this forever. We just need to do something to, you know, mitigate COVID. And we actually need to try to get our numbers down a little further. We're, we're starting to maybe see like that we're over the peak now. But we're not all the way through the woods, guys. I'm sick of it too. I'm sick of wearing a mask for 12-hour plus shifts at work. It sucks. I don't want to wear it all the time, but I also have seen what happens to people. And it's really easy to ignore it until it's your family member, until you see a patient that has children that dies and their children don't have them anymore. It's, it's easy to ignore that if it's not your parent, your grandparent. But what's prob, the problem is that a lot of these patients come in and say, hey, my child, my grandchild was home in quarantine. Oh, now look, oh, I happen to be positive. It sucks. It does. We're sick of this. And I know I'm starting to ramble now, so I just basically want to come back to, I think we need to set a better example for our children. We need to quit bickering about this. We need all of the adults. And we just need to realize we need to come together and do what it needs, what needs to happen to, you know, reduce the strain on our hospital system because it's still pretty bad right now, guys. I'm not gonna lie. Okay? I'm tired. If you can't tell, I just finished a weekend at work. It sucks. I'm tired of this. So let's just quit the bickering. Let's all grow up and let's just help get COVID to go away, at least not to the point where it's at.
Jessica, you're at your time. If you could, wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you for that and have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right, and then is it Brianna Lovelace?
Good evening, friends. My name is Brianna. My child is a third grader at Dunlap Elementary. There's been a lot of things that have been going on since this mandate came out. I've sent out numerous emails, made several phone calls. What I will say is most alarming is this mask mandate is no longer allowing a positive therapeutic teaching environment or learning environment. We have students being grabbed by staff. First instance of a malfunction amongst staff behaviors, so on and so forth, was, I believe, the first week that we all came back after that four-day vacation. My child decided they wanted to call home. Wanna go? I wanna go home, talk to my parents. No. Pardon me? My child's friend was told that if you choose to call home, you will face going home, as well as you'll be suspended for three weeks. Being the decent humans that we are, we make those phone calls. We say, hey, what's going on? Oh, that was never said. Okay, dismissed. Moving forward to this last week, I received a phone call about 9:44 in the morning. You need to come pick your kid up. Okay, fine. Why? What's going on? Is he sick? Is he hurt? No, you don't want to wear your mask. Okay. So out of one child in that entire classroom, he doesn't want to put a mask on? He's a problem? What harm is one child doing to the rest? Anybody got stats for me? I don't think so. My child reported to me after I picked him up that he had been in class for about 20 minutes. Class starts what? 8:20. We figure kids get settled in. 8:30. I was notified at 9:44. Anybody want to tell me what happened in that timeframe and why? There was some further information that was shared with me after I picked my student up and got to my vehicle. One of which, a staff member said they were gonna get in his face. That's intimidation. That's not acceptable, right? I don't appreciate that and I sure don't think anybody in this room would appreciate me getting into anybody's face, would they? I don't think so. We can have conversations all day long about who believes in what. At the end of the day, we need to be doing what's best for each of our own, right? Thereafter, a staff member got in my kid's face. He was told to stand up. My kid's pretty obedient. He stood up. What happened next? He was grabbed. Why this was not told me in the office, I don't know. But what I can say is that I can't put my hands on any person in this room, right? What gave them the right to do this over a mask? My kid, who is nine, when he was no imminent threat to himself or others? He made no indication he was going to harm himself or others or quote runoff.
You're at time, so if you could wrap it up.
Great. Furthermore, you have the decision to wear a mask if you choose. We all have our own reasons, right? You might be sick, you might be male compromised, you might care for somebody who can't get sick because they might be on him or whatever the case may be. But that does not give anybody in this room the right to say, hey, your child needs to wear a mask because of whatever the other reason may be. We now have problems with our learning environment. We now have kids missing many days of school. Most of all, our kids are losing trust because now, hey, I went to school, they're all screaming at us today. Oh, why? Masks. By the end of day Tuesday of that first week, they are screaming at us at the top of their lungs all day. By the end of that week, I did go to parent pickup that week because I couldn't that day, given the nature of my job. Every teacher, every student looked exhausted. And I can tell you right now, it's because of the masks and it's because of all of the high emotions, all of the force.
I have to cut you off.
Great.
Sorry.
But it doesn't give anybody the right in this room to make those decisions for other people, am I correct? You do what you need to do for you. We will do what we need to do for our child.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is it Heather Gilman?
Hi, I'm Heather Gilman. I'm a school of choice. I live on 41 McKinley Ave North. And, okay, so I did email this, but I didn't get a response, so I'm just gonna briefly read my email. My son is a student at Dunlap and I wasn't sure if anybody else is aware, but are you aware that these students go into lunch to eat and they do not have to use the bathroom to wash their hands? There's no sanitizer outside of the gym where they go in to eat lunch for them to wash their hands before they eat and after they eat? I find this very concerning because we're being forced to make our kids wear masks to stop, slow the spread of COVID, but they are touching the mask all day, you know, and then they're going in and they're eating and they're not washing their hands. And then after they've eaten and they've put their germs all over their hands, now they're going to class. And that, I just feel like it's working against itself. If you're gonna make them wear a mask to help stop, slow the spread, why aren't we following up with other measures that also help stop, slow the spread? So I send sanitizer in his lunch bag and make him, by words, you know, you need to make sure you're using it and pay attention to how much is being used every day. But I can't help with everybody else either and I really don't like masks. But with that said, I really want other measures to be in place, like at North Penn, where my son went before Dunlap. All the students were locked down to the bathroom and they had to use the bathroom, wash their hands before they went to lunch. I understand that's kindergarten, first and second grade, but still, third, fourth, fifth graders, anybody who has a child that age knows that they do not care about hygiene and they don't take the initiative on their own, so that is my concern, so.
Thank you. Is that all, Ms. Sarah? Okay, thank you. Moving on to 3.01, the superintendent report. Mrs. Limer?
No comments tonight.
No comments? Okay, thank you. All right, 4.01, the Student Body Representative Report. Natalie?
Hi, everyone. This is the most people I've had in any of my meetings. So I'm glad you guys all came out. So me and Ms. Limer just had a meeting and here are a few of the things that we are going to work towards quickly in our school. So we are gonna work on the dress code. A lot of the students have been asking for this and we're gonna work with the administrators. And we're going to work with the administrators and see what we can do for this. The second thing, we are going to see if we can come up with solutions for helping kids in their academics to help them get caught up. So not as many people are failing as they are right now. Um, the third thing we're going to do for right now is we're going to work on communication. As you guys know, we've had a lot of trouble with this in the past and we're going to work on this. So the parents are more informed, the students are more informed. Everybody is getting every information they can and we can form a bond so you guys can trust us more and be able to be like, oh, I know those help. Those are a few of the things that we're going to be working on. And then we also have winter sports that are doing great still. Um, the high school band is going to have a performance February 24th for our pre-band festival. And that's about it.
Thank you so much, Natalie. Um, 4.02, administrative guidelines for district response to COVID, Mrs. Lemer?
I'm a visual learner. And teacher. So I wanted to share with you some information that I got today from, um, the Calhoun County Health Department during the weekly superintendent briefing. Um, so this is a call that consists of the superintendents from each district in Calhoun County, as well as Eric Hussle and, um, who's the health officer. And also today, the local epidemiologist was on that call as well. Um, I found that this graph is probably, well, the nicest thing that I've seen in quite some time from my vantage point. And what it shows is the weekly cases per 100,000 people. And the way that the health department makes their recommendations versus requirements is, is based not solely on this metric, but it's a metric that, um, is very important in terms of measuring community spread. And so you can see that from, um, just two weeks ago, the 26th of January, when we were kind of at the peak of things here in Penfield to now, that there's been a drastic decrease in the number of cases per 100,000 people. So that's, that's a good sign because a lot of the trending that, um, is often shared with us is based on like larger geographical locations or based on, um, scaling up the data. And so that, that's really, really good. The second thing that I pulled together, I wanted to get our local data so that the board, um, would have an idea of what the current numbers are. So from January 2nd to January 6th, that week, there were 45 positives and 191 students that had to be quarantined. And when we say the number of students that had to be quarantined, that isn't somebody calling us and saying it's in our house and we're keeping our kids home. Um, this is who we had to contact, trace outside of the household and quarantine. Moving into the second week, January 7th to January 14th, so like, you know, basically two weeks after lots of gatherings and things like that, we shot up to 97 positives and 554 quarantines. So that's, that's an astounding number there. Um, we didn't even have 554 quarantines from the beginning of the school year until the end of the year. So in that one week, we did more, we had to respond with more quarantines than we had the entire school year. So that, um, then going to the week of January 15th to the 22nd, that's 69 positives and 221 quarantined. So the reason why there was distance learning and why there was a request to get our students back to face-to-face learning was because we know that our students' ability to learn when they're face-to-face with a teacher is better than when they're in distance learning. And so distance learning isn't a long-term solution for getting kids caught up. It's not even a long-term solution for providing a basic education. And so again, that's a strategy that our teachers have utilized to help keep kids from falling further behind. So we get to Jan- the week of January 23rd to January 30th, we still had 92 positives, but only 44 quarantined. And last week, um, 15 positives and 41 quarantined. So looking back at that graph, the larger community of all age groups, and looking at our data based on numbers within our district, you can kind of see that, um, things are, are looking good. The spread is, we're out of the worst of it. That came from the health officer's mouth and, and not mine. The other thing that we were informed of is that, um, any day, uh, there will be a change in the health department's orders. And those changes will involve eliminating the quarantine order. Um, Kaila Mizzou, who shares the same epidemiologist as Calhoun County, lifted their quarantine order. And so when I say, you know, it's a matter of time, it, it could be, I don't know, tonight. It could be tomorrow. I don't know the exact date. But once that happens, we'll be looking at, um, having a, I think, much smoother situation for people to make decisions for their child. So the administrative guidelines that I submitted to the board are an effort to be transparent so that, um, uh, the community, our students, our parents, and the board understand how decisions will be made moving forward regarding our response to COVID. So, um, if the quarantine order is lifted before, uh, February 18th, then the universal masking will be lifted at that time as well. Um, while we are still responsible for contact tracing and quarantining students for the next eight school days, our plan is to offer both options of distance learning and face-to-face learning for our students. Um, we're going to continue to offer the four different quarantine options for, um, families that opt for that if their child is exposed. Um, and, uh, that includes the keeping your child home for 10 days or, um, sending your child daily with a test to stay option or a shortened quarantine of five days and testing to return on day six, um, as well as if you've had it in the last 90 days or you're vaccinated, you're exempt from having to quarantine. But ultimately, after February 18th, which we don't have school the 18th, so after February 17th, the plan is that the universal masking will go away. So in the future, the way that universal masking would potentially be considered again is if, um, we were in a situation where our average attendance rate in a building was below 80% for five, a five-day average and our, um, community spread rate was in the highest category. So that's, um, currently something that, where you see that peak in that graph, that is reflective of us being in that highest category. So with that being said, um, the, the past precedent has been making decisions based on where the district has been with spread and making, um, the mitigation strategies that are utilized based on the district data. And moving forward, I'll be looking at building-level data to help make those decisions. The other thing that's identified is that after spring break, we will, um, not be offering distance learning anymore. We're going to focus on, um, how we can accelerate our students' growth and make enough for learning loss so that, um, between that time and the end of the year, we're able to really focus on high-quality instruction inside of our classrooms. Obviously, if, um, for some reason, the information I've been given repeatedly by the health officer is not true and there for some reason is still a quarantine order, we would have to go back and look at that. But ultimately, um, our goal is that our students are face-to-face and our teachers are able to focus on the instruction that they're providing students in person. And so, um, the final thing is that I have secured, um, a significant amount of additional tests. And so the other piece of, um, quarantine moving forward, even without a quarantine order, is that there would be greater access to families that want to have testing kits on hand to, um, make sure that if their child has symptoms, that they're not sending them to school with it. And, and that's kind of a big, big part of that. Did you have any questions about the COVID protocols that I submitted to you?
Um, I do. Uh, I don't want to speak for anybody else on the board, but part of the, part of the, uh, the talk or the, the request of going to these masks and stopping the, the quarantine process and, and obviously showing the 500-plus more kids that we have in our building for our teachers to teach face-to-face, it kind of contradicts if, if we're now saying, if you want to stay home and distance learn, it's putting our teachers back into that, we got half our class or a quarter of our class and now we're back to teaching both ways. Is, is that how I'm understanding this?
Yeah, it's not that, um, that number is not like as significant as one might think. So, um, I contacted each family that had been denied the option of being able to access the, um, quarantine or being able to access the, um, distance learning over the past, uh, two weeks due to the universal mask mandate and, um, discussed what the options were. Um, and, you know, ultimately, prior to universal masking, when the, when somebody's child got quarantined, they had the option of accessing distance learning for the 10 days if they didn't want their child to be vaccinated or their child to be tested or, um, daily, right? Or those other things. And so when we went to universal masking, that choice was taken away from them. And so in my conversations with families that had been requesting distance learning due to their child's underlying health conditions and, um, for whatever other reason, it turned out that we had four families that wanted to take advantage of their child being able to do distance learning that had been otherwise keeping their kid out of school. The last thing that I think any of us in this room want is for kids to miss out on learning because of the masks. So, um, the, those kids will be calculated into this number, right? Because ultimately, absent the mask mandate, they would probably be here in person. But, um, you know, they're not being, those kids aren't reported to the health department, but for my purposes of looking at how many are out of school due to this, that, that's what that number means to me. Um, but it's not like a quarter of the class. Our in-person attendance is higher than it's been all year. Um, and the number of families that, that piece applies to, in my opinion, is a small amount of families, but ultimately, their voice and their kids matter too.
Absolutely. And I, and I totally agree with, with health conditions and so on. Um, I, I can't help but speculate that the phone is going to, is going to definitely ring off the hook tomorrow morning and we're going to have a lot more than four families.
So one of the things that I've been processing through with, um, parents is, you know, what the best choice for their child is. And I've spoken with many parents that, you know, are against masks, but their child wants to be in person for school. And so it's, it's not about making a statement. It's, it's about doing what's best for your family and for your child. And, um, we know that with 110% certainty, our kids do best when they are with their teacher and their classmates and able to socialize. I've, um, been visible in buildings to see firsthand that our students are getting many breaks throughout the day, that their, um, you know, kids have different levels of tolerance, um, for wearing a mask. And I, you know, I think that most school districts were required to mask last school year. And, um, you know, I, I've sent the message to our administration and to student or our administration and to staff that we need to have grace. It's, uh, important to give kids as many breaks as they need to be able to be successful during school.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's not public comment. I'm so sorry. Any other questions? Okay. So the next item on here is, uh, my 100-day plan. So, um, even though that wasn't my second interview with the board, uh, I'm a planful person. I'm a goal setter, aren't I? Right? I got to set the goal because that's where accountability comes from. That's how, um, we can work together. And, um, and for you to get a good idea of how I lead and how I operate. And so I did go through the process of developing a 100-day plan so that we would have a way to, um, focus in on some specific goals and I think lead us to a place where we have a strong foundation to set some short-term and long-term goals for the board, as well as the board setting goals for me moving forward within the district. So if a 100-day plan is not something that you're, um, familiar with, you know, one of the things that I think is really important about it is that, um, it really can be the foundation and groundwork for future work. And that's what I'm hoping that we can use the, the plan for. But in a nutshell, it's a map of priorities. And, um, it's, it's there to help keep us focused, keep me focused with all of the distractions that come about in any given day. And also for me to be able to communicate accountability to all of you. The way for you to say at the end of that 100 days, did Stephanie do what she said she was going to do here? And, um, how did these efforts lead to impact, positive impact in our district? So the first goal that I identified is developing a strong relationship with the board. So what I'd like to be able to accomplish, um, at the end of the 100 and, the end of the 100 days is really being able to set short-term and long-term goals for the board. Um, to do that now, I think, would be premature because I don't have the relationships established and I don't have, um, the ability to say that I'm immersed into the climate and culture and community and traditions of the district. So, um, the way that I plan to develop strong relationships with the board is to work with all of you to develop a shared vision. I plan on facilitating a board, at least one board retreat with you between now and May. And there's a few things specifically that I'd like for us to work on. And that is, um, I believe in, um, trust being the foundation of relationships. And so I want to do some work with you on Stephen Covey's book, The Speed of Trust, and, um, looking at the 13 behaviors that are identified there and talking about how that is important to our working relationship. I also want to evaluate and consider committee structure, which we're going to talk about tonight. I'd like to utilize a self-assessment tool, which is a, a governing tool that's put out by the Michigan Association of School Boards so that after we've had some time to work together, we can get a baseline of where we're at as a board and superintendent and that'll also drive our future work together. The second goal that I have is to continue to promote a safe and fiscally responsible school district. So part of what I'll be doing in the first, um, 100 days is meeting with the supervisors of, um, all of the operational parts of the district, like transportation, food service, um, business services, also facilities and maintenance. Um, and one of the things that I'm trying to learn about is what are our roles and responsibilities? What do job descriptions look like compared to the actual reality? What does, um, our budgeting process look like? And what will our budgeting process moving forward look like? Another thing that I have on my to-do list is analyzing current job descriptions and our organizational structure and being able to make recommendations and communicate about what I think that it should look like in the future. Um, I'm also going to be leading the bond work, the construction that we're getting ready to kick off. And finally, also, um, making sure that we have updated emergency operations plans and crisis response plans for our district, that our staff are appropriately trained on that as well. Do you have any questions on goal one or goal two? So, the third goal is continuing to build staff engagement to promote positive and to promote positive school culture. So, here what I plan to do is really, um, make sure that I'm doing everything I can to understand what staff are feeling, what, um, the, regardless if you're a teacher or a support staff member, that you have the ability to, um, attend a listen and learn session with me where I can hear about, um, how things are currently structured and how, um, employees view their role in that and maybe what things they need to feel more supported in the future. And, and I think that it's important to do that sooner rather than later. I've already completed some of those with some employee groups and I'll be getting more of those set for the other employee groups that I haven't been able to talk with yet. I also, um, believe in having a coaching relationship with the administrative team. So, I will be meeting with them in one-on-one meetings to help identify what things they're working on or what they need support with. And also, um, you'll notice that, that same, uh, strategy that I had for board relations is a strategy that I'm gonna use with the administrative team as well. And that's working through those 13 behaviors that Stephen Covey identifies in The Speed of Trust and also utilizing the Strengths Finder assessment so that, um, we can learn about how each of us work and, and find out how we work well with, uh, some people better than others and how to use, um, our strengths to, um, be beneficial in any team setting that we're on. And so, it's something that's really important to me because I know what my weaknesses are, but I don't like to walk around with them on my, um, my sleeves. So, it's helpful to me when I know who on my team has, uh, one of those as something that's a strong suit for them. And, and it's important to me to be able to make sure that there's balance and that, um, we're able to work together well. Also, a big thing for me is getting a baseline on where we're at with climate and culture. So, specifically, um, where we're at with employee engagement in our organization. A lot of times, surveys will say something like, you know, uh, how long have you worked in the district for? Um, and do you feel safe? Do you feel supported? The survey that I plan to use is from HumanX, which is a company out of Kalamazoo. And they specifically focus on talent, fit, and engagement. So, this survey helps to identify, um, things like the employee's relationship with their supervisor and specifically how they're being professionally developed and coached and inspired to wanna do better, be better. It also looks at their relationships with their peers and how teamwork works and how collabora-, how are they able to authentically be collaborative with one another? And, um, it also looks at, uh, things like, you know, um, in terms of peer-to-peer relationships. Do you have a personal relationship with somebody at work? Do you, there's research out there that shows that when people have, uh, a friend at work or somebody they know that they could go to if they had a problem, right? That they're more engaged in the work of that organization than they otherwise would be. The other thing that, um, I wanna look at with the staff is looking into, when you say something like Panther Pride or every district has maybe a different, um, slogan, but what are those core values that we have here in our community? And so, I wanna identify that with our staff. I wanna do that exercise with our students, with the board, and with the community as well. The fourth goal that I have is continue to build student, family, and community engagement to promote a positive school culture. So, just like I want to, um, do the listen and learns with our staff, I also plan to do that with our families and with community members as well um, by having a series of dates set that people can, um, join me and, uh, give me input and tell me about what, uh, is going well here and what they'd like, like to see, uh, improve. The second thing that I, um, wanna do is learn about what our current efforts are for climate and culture. I see that our buildings have lots of different things that they're doing at the building level to encourage that. And so, um, so I have that on my to-do list. I also plan to implement a senior lunch program so that I have the opportunity between now and graduation to personally sit down with our seniors and find out about how their education has gone, what they've really enjoyed about Penn Field, what they think that we need to consider moving forward for, um, future classes of our, uh, our students that are coming through. And, um, the other thing that I plan to do is establish a student advisory as well. And I'm gonna be doing that, um, with Natalie Pratt. And I'm also going to launch a parent advisory. And the purpose of those two advisories are for me to not only learn, but to also identify priorities and, um, share that information with the board as well. And, um, oh, the fight song. I mean, I've heard it's to, I've at least gotten as far as learning that it's to the Wisconsin fight song is the tune. But I haven't actually heard it with the lyrics. But, I mean, not that I was ever a cheerleader or anything, but it's like, I need to know. We need to start singing the fight song at a lot of different activities. I mean, I just can't have it any other way. So, I do want to rejuvenate the, um, the Panther Fight Song, so. Friday, so I can learn it? Okay. I need, uh, I need the lyrics. What? What'd you say?
Tomorrow's boys' basketball, just saying.
Okay. Do they sing it there? Cause they didn't sing it on Friday.
I can help you with the fight song. I can, I got you, I got you on that one.
I was expecting to hear it last Friday. Okay, I'm like, I, I need multiple opportunities to practice, so. Um, and I am told that, so we're not the kids. Don't give me a mic or anything. Okay, good, good, good. I have like one key and it's like an E-flat, so. Awesome. Any questions about goals three or four? Kind of flows together. And the fifth thing, I know there's two things here, but this is the most important area and these are two really big things. And, um, that is analyzing student achievement data in order to identify critical issues in Penn Field schools that are barriers to closing achievement gaps. This is something that has to be a focus moving forward. And so, first, um, it's about focusing on achievement data and professional development plans. And the administrative staff will tell you already that in one week, man, she keeps bugging me about this, right? This is probably, um, the single, uh, most important thing that we have got to focus on is looking at our data to identify where the holes are and really digging into getting training to, um, the people that we're expecting to lead pretty remarkable, um, achievement. And it means that we have to have systems and structures in place that will support students getting what they need, when they need it, both academically, behaviorally, and in terms of social, emotional learning. All, all of those are extremely important. And when kids spent the better part of two years not in a normally structured, routine, school environment where they would have, you know, a plan for how they were gonna be getting that social interaction every day without them even knowing it, you know, that, that's how school worked, kids started to really, um, fall, fall quite a bit behind in some of those social, emotional milestones that, that they, um, would otherwise, you know, have benefited from, from being in face-to-face school for those, those periods of time. And I was just talking with somebody today and remarking how it has been, you know, three years since our kids had a normal year of school. And, um, you know, that's, it's kinda like a time warp because, um, you know, it, it feels like it was just, yeah, I can just, I can see it, I can feel it. I know, I remember what it was like, but it's been a minute. And so, the science behind school and evidence-based practices all point to multi-tiered systems of support. That's what MTSS is. And so, multi-tiered systems of support is the system that specifically I'll be looking at how we're implementing that currently and looking at, um, what our current capacity is. We've had a lot of change in administration. And so, what training each of those individuals has received and not on how that system works is important from year to year. And so, I'll be looking at, um, identifying what the priority areas are to make sure that everybody that's tasked with leading that system is, is up to speed on that. Any questions on that?
That's great.
So, I've already started on a lot of this, but, um, a lot of these things are in motion. But I think it's important that you hear about it because it will make sense then why I'm doing what I'm doing, why you see, um, me asking the questions that I'm asking or initiating things like parent advisories and student advisories. It's because I believe that those strategies are what's going to be tied to, um, the goals. And so, the outcomes that will come from that will lead us to a place where by mo-, by May, we'll be able to have conversations about what goal setting is gonna look like for the future. So, I appreciate your support in that. And, um, I've shared this with the administrative team as well as the cabinet and I plan to share this with the staff, um, and, and our district professional development so they kind of have an idea of what's going on there. And I shared it with them electronically as well. So.
Have you been able to feel or determine what the bond with the Vanna's like in the South God?
So, um, so far, I mean, it, they've only seen me for a week or, you know, I've only been here for a week. So, so far, everybody has welcomed me with open arms, very happy I'm here, thanking me for communication with them. Um, I, I think across the board, that's been identified by staff as something that they've been lacking is communication from, um, their superintendent. And so, I plan to continue to really focus on that. Um, I think that, you know, along the way, it'll become more clear as I start to seek feedback about where we're headed from people, um, whether they're truly in support of that or not. But so far, so good. Feeling, feeling the love.
Good, good.
Wonderful.
Awesome. Okay. So, that wraps up that item. So, the next item is the Board Communications Policy and Protocol. So, one of the things that was on the 100-day plan was, um, meeting with the board president, looking at current communication protocols and policies. And so, what I learned is that the district has one communications policy that has not been updated since, I think, 2011. It's a pretty generic, um, policy around communication. And so, one thing that's really important is that we have a, um, I think, a more defined communication protocol so that people are clear on roles and responsibilities from the staff to, um, parents, to board, to superintendent. And so, I, um, found that in my previous district that doing that and defining that really helped. Um, board members and myself alike to kinda know what our collective agreements are and how we work together for communications. And, um, especially, you know, given I'm the third superintendent this school year, um, I think there's probably been a lot of different, um, guidance on how your superintendent has wanted to communicate with you. So, in some districts, the board creates a governance manual. And in other districts, boards, um, might adopt a policy that accomplishes the same thing. And a, a governance manual is not out of the question. It's, it's just something that isn't really like doable within a, a month or two. So, the board communications policy that I, um, am submitting to you and wanna have some discussion around is just, um, you know, a starting place for us to be able to identify what we'd want that to look like. And ultimately, I'd like to bring it back to the board for a first reading at the next meeting. Um, so, looking at the board policies, to me, it looked like it would fit best in the 1,000 category of our current policies, um, which is administration in terms of where it would fit. But, um, I just wanted to hear what your thoughts were. If you had an opportunity to review it prior to the meeting, what input you have, if you're comfortable with it?
I did review it, but I wasn't really sure where we were going with it tonight outside of you presenting it. But I would like to, you know, to be able to have time to look. You know, if you're asking for our concerns or input or whatever, I would like to have time to go over that.
I think in reading through it, it was, I mean, aligned with the expectations that, you know, I was told about when I was onboarded. I think this just clearly spells it out, whereas we had it in a PowerPoint before. It's in a policy here, like.
I, I agree. I agree. I think it's, uh, I think it's much needed and a little bit more defined on some areas. Some open meetings act violation stuff that clearly needs to be spelled out. Electronic and voice communications. I mean, I, I particularly, I, I like.
You all, you, um, okay with it, Brad?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excellent.
Dom, oh, sorry. Dom, do you remember back to the first of the year, um, '21? Did we revise a electronic communication? It seemed like maybe you were involved with that policy. Is there another, what I'm wondering, is there another policy out there that we should bring to the table before we?
I would have to go in and, and look.
Okay.
Um, I think part of that, that you're talking about is, was live streaming. It had to do with some of that type of stuff.
I, I think one of the, one of the Facebook pages or something got going on. I just can't remember if we, do you remember? Uh, we, the 3112 that is also attached, um, it, we had some, I, I have to go back in minutes, but, um, um, that was on there. Um, I don't know if we amended that. I know it does say, what, 2011?
11.
Yeah, I think we changed it since. We, we just went over this, this 3112 in January, February of, of last year. Um, something got updated or something on that. We had, but we had that. We had the social media, um, internet, um.
That's a, that's a different one. The social media is a different one now.
I remember now.
That policy as well.
What our issue was with this policy was in number, letter A, was that any communication through the staff had to be done through the superintendent. And that made some staff uncomfortable. Um, and so, we talked about revising that, but we never did. But in this new policy, it leaves that a little more open and that it doesn't make it so they're not allowed to. It's just that we would then point them in the direction to the correct administrator. But it doesn't put that stipulation on it that was making some staff members feel uncomfortable.
Yeah, it wasn't.
So, that's why I like this.
It wasn't updated.
I like the proposed one. But there, there was something to do with electronic communication or social media specifically. So, I just, I wanna make sure we're not making contradictory policy that we're bringing everything to the table before we revise it all. This is, this is staff, superintendent, board, communication, clear and decisive.
Yeah, we never updated this particular policy. We talked about it, but we never updated it.
Okay.
The, the, the social media one we did discuss though.
So, I will double-check how, look that policy up. So, I will double check how, look that policy up. I think I, I am coming off of Miola, so I think I know the policy that you're referring to.
Okay.
I don't think it makes any mention of communication within the board and the superintendent and staff and community, but.
I think it limits what the board is supposed to do on social media.
Okay. Okay.
So, if we, even if we adopted this as is at some point, what does the process look like? It's a, it's a multi-read thing? We have to go through it several times? How many meetings?
So, every, I think that what I saw that you all do is, or have done is three readings. So, you can circumvent that, you can approve it, and it'll go into effect. It needs to be on the next regular board meeting agenda and be affirmed a second time to make it a policy. So, that's another option if the board wanted to do that. But, I mean, ultimately, these are the things that in the meantime, while it's not an officially adopted board policy that I would hope that we could commit to, to move forward and, you know, try and practice these things.
I would hope, I think, as a senior board member, that we don't wait for more meetings to adopt this. I'm not saying we should rush and do it today, but I would hope we could do it sooner than now.
So, let me look at our calendar for upcoming meetings to see, you know, how we could potentially accomplish it.
So, real quick, I just looked up February 15, 2021. We went through 75, 40, 01, 43.1, 01, 67.6, and then we talked about this 3112 policy at the same time. That's the, the social media policies and stuff that you guys spoke on. So, no, we did not do anything with 3112 at that time.
Okay. Sounds good. Dawn, I'll set up a time for you and I to chat about this if we can go through it.
I'm not saying that I have a problem with it. I just thought that you were asking us, was there anything that we wanted differently?
Yeah.
You know?
So, I'll follow up and make sure that before it comes back again, that if there, you know, you have enough time to process. And if there's stuff that you identify you want, that we take that into consideration. And I'll, once we talk about committees tonight, that'll, this would be something that I would want to work on with the policy committee. Okay.
Awesome. 4.05 then.
Okay, so we have training with Rod Green coming up, February 23rd at 6:30. The training's going to last about two hours. And the primary focus is on roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and the board. I had a couple of questions submitted to me that I've already passed along to Rod. One is on goal setting, what that looks like. The other is on what recommended trainings Rod has for board members as a basic set of trainings for any school board member. And so, that was based on Jeff's request for us to discuss that and look at that. And so, Rod has got quite a bit of experience in school board governance. So, I think he'll have some good recommendations for us on how to move forward with that. Were there any other questions that you wanted Rod to address in his training? Or topics that you're interested in hearing about when he comes to present? You're good with it? Okay.
How did you feel about it?
Yeah, I'm, I feel good about it. I mean, I've been through the training two other times. And I think it's a good refresher, honestly. I, I've found it to be valuable every time. He just, he likes to customize it based on what boards want. I think the big thing that I am hoping for him to elaborate on, I did send him my Hundred Day Plan to ask about how we could look at like a modified version of the evaluation tool for the, you know, month of June because to conduct the entire evaluation on me for, you know, four months or whatever is pretty cumbersome. And, you know, I'm not going to lie, it'd be a lot of work to try and pull out evidence for every single one of those indicators for that amount of time. So, I took it upon myself to do a little crosswalk between the Hundred Day Plan and the evaluation tool to make it a little bit easier to draw the, you know, connect the dots basically and simplify it a little bit.
Perfect.
So, you know, you don't technically have to conduct an evaluation on me until like a full year. So, you could wait until next December. But my contract turns over on July 1st, and my compensation is tied to merit pay, which is based on my evaluation. So, you really need to evaluate me before July 1 because of the merit pay being part of my contract.
Quick question.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding from Mr. Myers was we were going to conduct a evaluation on him, kind of the same thing, a prorated, however you want to phrase it. But my understanding through him was our district has to have a superintendent evaluation on file once a year.
Yep.
So, we're already out of that for 2021? We don't have a superintendent evaluation on file for 2021?
There was one submit, there had to be one submitted for last year.
2021? 2020, December 2020 is the last time the superintendent.
So, that would be for the 2020, 2021 school year. So, now you're in 21, 22 school year, and you need to have one submitted for this school year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And the only exception to that is if you're rated highly effective for three consecutive years, then you can give your, your administrator a year off.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. So, and I specifically need to have one submitted within the calendar year. And the way that it gets submitted is a report to the state. And so, it's just a code that gets entered.
I just, I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Could that be one of our goals in that meeting with Rod, that we just set some dates for those, you know, and discuss, and then just set the dates? Then we just, you know, we know.
Yep. I'll make sure that that is tackled.
All right. 4.06, Board Committees.
So, this is something that came up when I was interviewed. And after a week on the job, I feel very strongly about. It's something I've, I've been trained in quite extensively. I feel confident that board committees will help us here in Penfield with utilizing resources effectively, being able to examine topics in a deeper way, and making sure that everybody is communicated with about what's going on. So, I, in my meetings with Dana, and I think with each of you individually, I brought up that I really felt that board committees would help us with making sure that the work is getting done. And the key to making sure that the work is getting done is by having individuals on the board dialed into the most, you know, important areas of operations for the district and, and having input there. And there's accountability built into those committees as well. So, an example would be this Board Communications Policy. If we were to have a policy committee, then what I would do between now and our next meeting is I'd pull the policy committee together for the purpose of working on this policy, beating it up, making sure we dotted our i's, crossed our t's, if there was anything else we wanted to change. And no decisions would obviously be made, but a drafted version of this with proposed edits would be sent out to the entire board before the next board meeting with an update of here's what we met on, here's what we've been working on, and what we're recommending to the board. So, when we come back to the board meeting and we're asking for action to be taken on the policy, the board can be confident in the fact that there's been quite a bit of involvement and work on making sure the policy looks the way that we want it and that questions have been asked and answered. And so, when we come for first reading it, it's a lot easier to just get down to business and, and keep the, the work moving along. And so, when we have big policy updates or if we're going to move forward with adopting the true policies, then it will help with making sure that as we go through the policy adoption that there's eyes on every policy so that you as a board member aren't responsible for reading 10,000 policies at a deep level. Another committee would be the Finance Committee. So, as we're looking at budget and the budgeting process for next year, being able to have not all of that responsibility just rest on the treasurer's shoulders, but there's three members that are able to come together and meet with me looking at that. Or if there's a big purchase along the way, something that was put on my radar today was looking at our radios. That would be something if I got down the line of researching that and recognized we potentially needed to make a big purchase that we hadn't budgeted for, that we'd bring the Finance Committee together and talk about that so that, and vet that proposal so that when it came to the board, the board would understand that, again, there had been significant board involvement and understanding that. The third committee that I'm proposing is, prior to, the Safety Committee had one board member, and I'd like to see that include three board members. The Facilities and Construction Committee would be before we bring things to the board for approval, like spending, paying out the bond money for bills or approving things out of the design phase, that a, a group of people would come together and look at that and ask questions and make sure that you're, you're answering it. So, ultimately, you're just more deeply involved in a couple of things instead of all things. And it allows for another way to have the board come together and get the work done in between the meetings when you're being asked to vote on things. So, the committees that Dana and I came up with as we were meeting were a Safety Committee, Facilities and Construction is one, Curriculum Coordinating, Finance, Negotiations, and Personnel. So, that one is, you know, both if there's personnel issues that are coming up, but also I'd like to have board members sit on the Negotiations Committee with me. I think it's important that our teachers and support staff know that we care about them and, and that their contract is important to us. And then the Policy Committee. And it doesn't get rid of the other committees that you all had signed up for during your organizational meeting, but these would be in addition to, and really focused on board superintendent relationships and how the work is moving forward.
I'm assuming at the same time, Stephanie, that that, if we should go that direction, establish these committees, then we would, at that point, start having a single board meeting per month rather than the committee of the whole and then a normal board meeting? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And so, the committee meetings, the reason why there's three board members, they are public meetings. We post committee meetings. We make, you know, we give advance notice on when those are going to be. But the reason why there's three board members is so that we're not in a situation where there's a quorum because during committee meetings, there are not decisions being made. They still have to come to the board for a vote. But ultimately, instead of doing one really long committee of the whole meeting per month, it's broken up into, and not every committee has to meet every month, right? Like, right now, the big thing that I would want to do is get the, the Policy Committee together to keep the work moving on this and get the Safety Committee together to update them on the work that's been accomplished, where we're at, and what we're planning on doing forward. But in terms of the other committees, possibly the finance, the Facilities and Construction Committee after I have meetings this week with the architect and our construction manager. So, I'd potentially be looking at pulling them together before the 21st as well to give an update on what's going on there and bring everybody up to speed with where we're at.
What are you looking forward, or what are you looking forward to, to move this idea forward?
So, what I would like tonight is for you all to kind of indicate which committees you would like to be assigned to. And ultimately, what I would do, because we won't have another committee of the whole meeting before our next board meeting. So, ultimately, what I would do is just informally, you know, pull the Policy Committee together between now and then, which isn't, you know, that's okay. But then I'd bring this back to the board at our meeting on the 21st for approval of the board committee structure and the committees who signed up to them. And if you want to think about it and let me know which ones you want to sign up for, or if you want to sort it out now, we can, either one is fine with me. I think Dawn wants to be on policy.
I was before, but we only had one meeting, so.
Is, is everybody good with going to the subcommittees? I, I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a good idea too.
I am, for sure. I'm just thankful that some more came on board. We just discussed this and we just turned this down. So, I, I, still back to the, the same idea. I like being able to get a lot more stuff done in the next weeks.
So, I do have a question because one of the reasons that I did not like the idea of it was before was because some of the meetings were going to take place during the day. And being my job, I can't be here during school hours. So, would these be after-hours meetings or would they be during-the-day meetings that would exclude our availability?
I believe that, I don't think that there's any of them that need to be during the day.
I mean, as long as the three people are doing right in time, anyway.
Yes, yes. And so, like, the way that I've had it happen, you know, in the past was like, for example, Curriculum Coordinating Council, I'd like to get parents, community members, and teachers on that. And so, some of the feedback that I've had in the past is that for the teachers, they really want to meet at the end of the school day. And so, the challenge to that is secondary is done a lot earlier than elementary, but we need to have everybody on there. So, that would be one maybe where we would meet at 4 o'clock. Which could be, right, which could be a conflict for somebody that is at work till 5 o'clock, right?
Right.
But one of the things that I would do is find out, like, for example, with your job, when are your staff meetings, when are your, you know, the things that you have? And we would create a schedule for something like that, the Curriculum Coordinating Council, with like lots of advance notice of when those were going to be and the times so that we could get all of the people, all the stakeholders together for that committee. In terms of the other committees, those are all just, not just, but those are, those are only board members will be on those subcommittees. The Curriculum Coordinating Council is the one that really needs to include multiple stakeholders on it. But I think any of them can be scheduled around work schedules.
Okay.
And typically, my experience has been they're usually at like 5:30 or 6:00.
Okay.
Dana, would you like to go through this tonight while we're all here?
Yeah, I mean, like, what I was thinking I, I could do is like make a list. And then, I, I mean, if we have four or five people that are interested in, in a committee, then Stephanie can kind of look it over and then have a conversations with like, so say, say all five people, like, say five or six people want to sign up for Safety Committee. I'm just making, I'm just picking it's tough on the list. Then Stephanie can have that conversation with the, the five people who want to be on that list. I mean, I know two people who really like safety a lot on this. I mean, I know two people who really like safety a lot on this table right now, um, so, and then she can have those conversations offline with, uh, those people throughout the next two weeks, and then we can bring it back to the board with, uh, like a more comprehensive list. So, um, I guess I'll start with the safety committee. I, I mean, Jeff, I know you're already on there, Tim, I know that's something that you're very passionate about. Um, and Dawn, I know you've mentioned that you, you really like safety. Is there anyone else on this board right now who like is passionate about the safety committee?
I'd say I'm pretty interested in that, just 'cause I've
Yep.
... been trained in it, so I kind of know the school policies for safety.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And that would be a, a good, a good one, that would be after-hours too, because we're bringing in, um, some teaching staff as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, facilities and construction?
I'd like to be on that one.
See, look, I knew this was gonna happen. I see, I knew.
You already had your name written down.
I have.
Three boys.
Um...
We took bets.
I did.
You owe me five bucks.
Yeah, I know. So, the four boys all signed up on that one. You're gonna have a conversation. Um, the curriculum coordinating, yeah, I have your name pre-written down on that one, I knew you would. Um, so, anyone else on the curriculum that is interested in the curriculum other than me and Sarah?
I can participate in that.
Um, finance other than Brian?
That was a cute one, I didn't throw.
Who's interested in finance?
That's the last committee.
Yeah.
Maybe that's, maybe that's Saturday, right?
Anytime, Rich.
Finance committee?
Brad.
I think you'd be good at it, Brad.
Educational?
Yeah.
Well, I, that's, you can put me
Okay.
As an option there.
Um, and then, uh, negotiations personnel?
I'd do that one.
Okay.
I would.
I think that might, um, like Brad and I, I, I think.
Yeah, you and Brad can't.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Um...
Jack said you'd.
And you would too, okay. And then, uh, policy?
I'd like that.
Yep. Don't have a bunch of bad policy.
How does math work here? Is there?
Uh, we're just, we're just putting slats right now.
Yeah, you're not, you're not married to anything yet.
Nothing's married, this is like, we're just filling out a chart right here, this is just like a easy breezy chart.
Well, it's gonna be a huge job.
I'll, I'll follow up with you regardless individually to make sure that you've not overcommitted, okay?
Dana, are you on the policy?
I am, I'm, I can be on policy. Um, Brian, I'm putting you down. Yep.
Whatever you need to do.
And then, I'll put Don down.
Awesome.
See, there we go, we filled out our chart. We only, we only have, yeah.
We got something done.
Yep, perfect, okay. Uh, any more discussion on that, or, uh, my hand's running horrible.
Do you have on finance?
Sarah needs to probably take a picture of that too. All right, all right, um, well, I guess at this time, we'll move on to 5.01, and I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thanks, guys.